Okay.
So the judge told them to say.
Call the meeting to order. Start with a prayer, then the pledge. Heavenly Father, we come to you to just thank you for this great day. We just got over Labor Day and I'm thankful for the industries and people that hire the people that work. And we're thankful for those workers that make our community great. Special prayer for Chief Denning on procedures he's having done. Pray for healing for him. Give us all wisdom in this, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Roll call Cheryl.
Barth.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Klepper.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ridgeway.
Here.
I see next on the agenda, Dr. Mike Campoe. I don't think, I don't see him out there. Doc, is that you?
Fish.
Fish? Okay. Okay, we'll move on. Approval of the August 16th regular council meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second?
My second.
Roll call.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yep.
Approval of bills, any questions?
What was the one? He's not here. Scott Kramer, Fire Department, Washington Wax.
That's what it said on the invoice, I know. It's something that comes in a can.
Oh, okay.
Any other?
Fire merch radios, I know he's not here, but I thought.
That's the annual.
Okay, that's, because I thought all the merch radios were all being supplied by Defiance County.
This is like an annual fee.
Okay.
It's not for the actual radio, it's for using the radios.
Okay, any other questions?
Make a motion to pay bills?
You got a first, have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Barth?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Boards and commissions, Park Board met on August 18th. Any questions on that?
Is the softball association just basically running down, I mean, they're meeting with architects and stuff, are they planning on just putting the bill for an architect? Does anybody know where that stands?
Last time I knew, by the sounds of it, the guy was donating, his time he was from Montpelier, and that was doing the layout for the, I don't remember the guy's name, or anything, he was from Montpelier.
I know they're.
The donating is.
Yeah, and they're doing some fundraising in the community, and I know they had reached out to, like, the county park board for some funds if they were willing to help anyway. So they're doing some outreach along with, you know, raising some funds on their own, so.
And none of that, so where that's going to sit, none of that is actually village property, right?
Correct.
So do we have much involvement in that?
Well, that's kind of why I directed him a little bit to the county park board. Ed Foster sits on that board, and I thought it'd be wise for them to meet up with them, tell them about improvements.
They only meet every quarter.
Yeah, and they've been real giving over the years when we needed fencing and/or improvements on their property, but I said you always need to let them know and talk to them about it prior to, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, council committee report, street light property committee met August 16th.
I have minutes, I just don't have them for everybody.
We did, we discussed parking across the street that Cory had recommended. Kind of decided we didn't want to.
We talked about this last meeting.
That's what I'm talking about.
I needed written minutes.
I was a little behind.
Oh, okay, we already talked about this.
That was last meeting.
Sorry, Ron.
Never mind.
I just thought I was having a flashback or something.
Okay.
You're all right.
Correction on the, on that report. Okay, police fire and EMS committee met the August 19th.
Yes, we met Chief Kramer, Eric Bassett, Mike Barth, Mayor, and I. We met. Chief Kramer wanted to talk about scheduling issues with EMS, having trouble on weekend coverage. And Chief, I guess you had a meeting since then, I'll bring that up later. So, anyway, the chief would like to hire two to four more full-time EMTs, and we didn't know if it's possible with the budget the way it is. And we talked about, you know, increasing leverage to help pay for it. We also talked about rotating schedule for weekend, or even paying somebody for 40 hours for 36-hour weekend work to cover. We're even having 12-hour shifts. Once again, it all comes down to money. Cheryl can probably answer that. And Chief Kramer also would like to outsource billing with a company of his own mind that would replace John Elwood. He thinks that they'd be able to collect more revenue for the village. He thinks they charge between 8% and 10%. And the committee asked him if he could have a representative come to the meeting, and he thought they could. And we'd like to see if they can come up with a rotating schedule, try anything else before we, and have to go to finance committee and try anything else.
Okay. Any questions for Larry in this committee?
I do have one thing on your minutes. Austin, is Austin Thomas?
Yes. Oh, Thomas, oh, I blame my wife. Not.
Just did that on the record.
No. Dub that, will you?
So are you going to put it in the finance committee as far as funding, or are you going to meet again like Cheryl?
Well, I think we'll see what the chief says, and I don't know, you know, if we open it up, if you want to hire, if we can afford anymore. I mean, it's bad enough we can't get coverage now, that's what I think.
I kind of put a bug in finance here. We met a few days after, and Taylor and Cheryl, Cheryl was able to make that meeting, and we talked, kind of talked about everything, we talked about the police fire EMS, about budgets and stuff, so.
But we need to get somebody scheduled for weekends regardless.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Water, sewer, and refuge committee met August the 30th. Minutes are in.
Like I said, we talked real quick, and Ken has a nice report in the packet today about the projects we got coming up, but our main meeting was kind of to look at the usage increase that we did not have, in fact, this year. We're kind of based on a 3% increase for operational expenses and things over the years. Wasn't enacted this last, this year here, but we're going to reenact, we'd like to reenact it in 2022 through 2024, as the state said. The other thing we discussed is the county that came to us with, they wanted some solid numbers on Gordon Creek if they were able to tie in, and we had given them permission prior to, but they wanted solid numbers with how much we would charge for outside village limits with the sanitary fees and everything. And after looking at all their rate flows, the amount of water they were pushing through their current plants, I know Ken and Cory and the committee all looked at the numbers, and they're pushing a lot of water through that plant. And from what they were saying, that they might still continue on with the current if they tied into the city with that number of flow. So we based our averages off their current flows. Don was able to run numbers off of that with double usage and everything, fees. So we gave them solid numbers from that. They have to make a decision on what they were going to do, what's best for Gordon Creek. But they had a couple options, kind of back in their, in their course. Then we discussed a little bit about the annexation, things within different businesses, residents, subdivisions, and things over the years, and we kind of wanted, not to make rash decisions or change anything, but it's something we need to address if we want to keep that enacted. Right now, as our ordinance reason, I reached out to Troy on this too, and the committee talked a little bit. You know, if somebody wants to tie into our system, they have to annex. If they're not able to tie, I mean, if they're not able to annex, then they would have to sign a contract that when they're able to down the road, in any way shape or form, they would have to at that point in time. But there's still a lot of people to tie in, they'd have to pay double rates, of course, but, you know, they would save quite a bit of money. We showed them the difference between if they were able to annex cost for that, that service and/or double rates because of non-annexation, so pretty much covered it, I think.
But that rate they have is awful expensive.
It's very expensive. They're, like I said, their, their numbers are showing 8,000 gallons per household per month. That's, that's very high.
A lot of water.
Extremely high, that's a ton of water and sanitary. We're trying to separate our system, you know, within the village and move, you know, sanitary to sanitary and storm to storm. We, they had mentioned, you know, they know they have some issues out there with intrusion and some storm drainage, so.
Do they have their own storm drainage out there?
Pardon me?
Do they have their own storm drainage out there?
They said they do, but as we talked to Jeff Rumpel and people, they have some issues with.
They said they do, but on heavy range it will back up and go into the sanitary, so they're tied together somewhere.
And you can see the numbers. I mean, their county engineer, sanitary engineer had, had shown us three years of numbers, actual numbers, and you can see a major influx in, in the amount of water going through the plant, so. And I thank them for reaching out to us on that. We only thought it was fair. If, if that's not going to get buttoned up, and that's what's coming towards us, you know, that's a lot for a plant to handle. That whole line is going to get tied into the Defiance area lift station, and to me, that's an impact on when we're, we're upgrading that entire area and the lift station, so that's an impact on that lift station. And I told, I know Ken and Cory, I have to make sure the engineers, if that's what they're going to do, you know, we got to make sure. And then for any future expansion, we talked about that with that lift station. We want to, if anybody, you know, comes in, subdivisions, businesses, anything out there, you know, we need to upsize it anyway to accommodate for additional flow. And we've tried to do that with most of our projects in town. We don't want to undersize it, we want to make sure that it's capable for growth, so.
Okay, any questions for Mike, the committee?
I just had a question for Troy in regards to that ordinance, that 92509. Is that something that would get recorded on the deed? So if they're to sale, if they're to sale between those times?
There would be an agreement. I mean, we could file something to make sure that it's of record so that ever, anybody knows that it's of record. I mean, we haven't, to the best of my knowledge, haven't done any of them. I mean, we might have required some of the annex, we didn't do any annexation agreements, but there should be something, something that's put it of record so that if they transfer it or whatever. And, and like Mike said, the way it's worded now is it's not discretionary, it's basically if you're going to extend it outside the village limits, anybody that it's being extended to is going to annex unless they're not legally able to because they don't share enough perimeter with the already existing village limits. And then it basically is worded that you'll sign something that says when you are able, you'll go ahead and do it or whatever, which makes sense. I mean, the, the thought behind it, and again, I wasn't the person that came up with it, is obviously the village and the village money and everything ought to be concerned with taking care of the citizens of the village and people that are paying taxes to the village and things, even if people are paying double the rates or whatever in order to get stuff. And so in a lot of the communities, smaller, even larger communities, they've done things like that and said, I know before I had my current job, when I used to just represent people that owned land in various parts of Defiance over there, they would get letters from the city of Defiance that says, hey, you know, you've been getting water from us for however long, you know, pursuant to this, you need to annex if you're eligible, if not, you need to sign an agreement saying you're willing to annex when, when eligible. And it got pretty heated there for a while, I know, a couple of spots, but it's just a way to make sure, you know, that the village is looking out for village residents, and because there is a cost of running it out there, there's a cost of maintaining it. And so I think the way to look at it is, if you're going to have the infrastructure and you're going to have to maintain it and do everything, you know, just paying for the, even the double rate alone may not be enough to, to cover some of that stuff, and that's where the annexation comes in. It's not an intentional attempt to grab land and expand the boundaries of the village and make it bigger and bigger and bigger. It's more of a equitable and financial circumstance, more than it is like we're out there trying to increase the size of the village.
Yes.
I'm Dale Schreick.
Yeah.
I'm a resident. Teresa Miller is a resident. We're not after a handout. You know, we, we pay for our own sewage system, pretty good implants, as you said. We take care of our own water and all that, so it's not like we've been pouring, getting water from the city or anything. I guess what we're looking for is whose court is this in now? Is it in the commissioner's court?
Yes.
Or is it in the city, the town's court?
Commissioners.
Right.
If we gave the price, so.
They basically have two options out there. They can rebuild the, the plant and update the plant for the subdivision and/or run the tie-in. It's the sanitary only up 49. So they wanted some numbers from us, and we based it off of what we charge outside entities and flow, and we can't really meter your lines or anything. We can't meter your water lines, you have wells, so.
Correct.
We did not want to go in, basically, to private property, and, you know, I'm saying, you got to run meters and everything, so.
Yeah, forget about it. We don't know what's going on. We have gotten zero information, so that's why we're sitting here right now.
Sure.
Trying to figure out.
Sure.
What the next moves are, some sort of timeframe, are we looking at weeks, months, years? They talked about that infrastructure available to try to help and all that good stuff. So, again, we're not here to make a fuss of it or anything like that, we're just looking for, for service in. As far as being part of, we've always been part of the community. I would argue anybody that says we're not part of the community, there's firemen that live out there, there are EMS, there are police officers, and we contribute to the city.
Okay.
Work uptown, my wife worked uptown for years, so we're just trying to find out what is the next move on.
Taylor, you had a comment?
I was going to say, as it stands, should the commissioners decide, yes, they want to? The decision for the commissioners is whether to rebuild the sewer plant or basically fund the rebuild of the system to get it into the village at the intersection there by Dairy Delight. The, should they decide that that's the route they want to go, that's only an option if Gordon Creek as a whole essentially decides that they want to annex, as our ordinance is currently written. So should they, so it's almost a two-part decision, if that's the route they want to go?
Yeah, it's always been an issue. We've paid many assessments for upgrades as the EPA comes in, it would seem to be a river of target for them. So it's not like we have not got any skin in the game, you know, if you're, you know, whatever. Appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments?
Do you have anything else?
No.
You're quiet. You have anything?
I know. He covered everything.
I've just, I mean, just a question as far as, I mean, have you talked to several of the other members or the residents, not members, residents out there, kind of what their thoughts are on the annexation side of things?
I've talked to them, some of them yell at me. But I try to, we try to tell them, keep an open mind, it may not be as bad as you think. So we're just looking for information.
But has the commissioners talked to you?
I talked to one commissioner, I talked to a commissioner, and that's.
But you haven't had a meeting, or?
No.
Because I thought Nick said.
Well, they talked about it, and I said we would, I would go, I went, mind, you know, presenting the numbers that the city has offered them and the residents, but I think they're, from what I understand, I can't be 100% correct, but I think they were planning on having a meeting, and, but they wanted some, they're still getting their numbers, yeah.
Nick had said that day in front of your office that he wanted to wait, before talking to them, he wanted to wait until he got concrete numbers.
Concrete numbers from everybody, it's, it's hard to.
Not complaining.
As far as the village, we want to apologize to you for leaving you in the dark, but there's really, and I said on the same committee with Mike, there's really nothing we can tell you at this point, but again, sorry if we, if we kind of left you in the dark.
No, that's taken.
Do you just feel like we're being kind of left in the dark a little bit when it comes to the county?
And we're.
Us too.
No. As soon as we, as soon as we find out something, I'm sure that Mike or the mayor or somebody will definitely get ahold of you and let you know which direction we anticipate heading. Appreciate it.
Okay, what about that 925? You want to discuss that now, or you lay, or give it to a committee? Ordinance committee to look at it?
Do away with annexation?
No, this contract with consumer annexation, you know, the one we passed back in?
That was 2018, right?
18, 2018. Do we want to look at that, or?
I think we need to look at what the best impact is on a community instead of making, you know, a nightly decision. I think it needs to be addressed and what's best for future growth, future outreach. You know, we have other subdivisions that aren't tied in, and I've had those residents say, I want to be tied in, I want to be annexed, and other ones say, no, I have no interest in that.
You get that?
I know.
925?
Yeah. You know, we've had some other annexations happen over the course of time here in the last number of years, and even the past, when I talk subdivisions, you know, the two have happened in the last, what? I remember Westwood, Yelfords, Hidden Brook kind of thing, they annexed right away and, and got tied in because they were looking at the number of homes, the infrastructure and things of that nature, so.
We talked, we talked about all this, you know, not too long ago when Justin was thinking about putting that subdivision out there in the golf course too. And we, we told him the same thing, you know, something, a fair rate, double sewage rate, like anyone on the front, I would pay. And at that time, I, you know, it was a lot lower total, this one, this, this number seemed really high to me compared to what?
That's dicker shot.
What we had told Justin initially.
The worst part about changing it and not annexing the, the new development is all the rest of us are paying income tax, and you can live out there. And I'm not going to use Justin's addition because it'll hit Facebook. An addition that's out someplace that is not in the village, but it has, you know, very nice homes, expensive homes, people with good jobs, even if they're paying $200 a month for sewer, it's still not fair to the rest of us that they don't have to pay a property tax like all the rest of us do.
Well, there, I think there's a lot of them on neighborhood drive. I don't know everyone that lives in all the houses. I know of certain individuals that they paid 1% income tax, it would, it'd save them money and pay single sewage rate.
Oh, yes, definitely.
There's a lot of people retired along that way, that 1% income tax, they would save a lot of money.
Yep, I know a couple of them also.
So you want to leave this lay for now?
I would just say, I think it's, I mean, in this scenario, you know, you're, you have to get the, it seems like an inhibitor for any sort of growth, and like a headache as far as keeping track of every one of these details. That's what I was asking about, is it, does it get recorded on the deed? Because as these sales happen, who's keeping track of those things that's going to force those things? And is it, is it an ordinance that we're actually going to follow through with? And if it, if we're not going to follow through with that ordinance and actually ensuring that they're going to annex, what's the purpose of having the ordinance?
I'm quite confident that, from living here all my life and working down around here, if, if they don't annex it when it becomes a housing addition, and they wait X amount of years until it becomes readily available to do it with, with the, it'll never happen. Never happen. You let six, eight, 10 years go by, and it'll never happen.
But they have to pursue us. We can't go out and say, hey, we want you to annex.
And it will never happen.
That's right.
Okay, so.
That's the point of the statute, is if you want the services extended to you, then we're going to require that as a condition for exactly what, what you said, is they'll never come, especially, like you said, if you got a nice, I mean, it all depends, because you're talking about income taxes, are you talking about? So some of those people theoretically, and I'm sure it applies accordingly, some of the people that live out there work in someplace in the village and are paying.
Sure.
Village, but there's probably some that don't, and maybe, I, I can't use this example, but I know there's a lot of people over in the Defiance area who worked at General Motors for many years that purposely lived out, that's how kind of the Ayersville area got all built up, because they didn't want to live in the city and pay some income tax. There's a lot of them that are that way, so, which is their, you know, but theirs, their right, but they're also aren't getting city services either. Like water and sewer, and I don't know what, somebody else would have to tell me, does the county or somebody come out and plow their road when it snows, and, because obviously.
Who does plow?
Township.
Township. So if it got annexed in, obviously that'd be another thing the village.
Sure.
Trash pickup.
Trash pickup, yeah. We're already.
Lot of benefits for you to come in.
And curb.
Whoa. Back the bus up.
Sidewalks.
Roads.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. Sidewalks in all the yards. By, by the home.
Don't say that. Police protection.
Okay, any other discussion on that?
Where do you want to go with it, Mayor?
I'd say they would just probably go to ordinance committee.
Well, that's. Don't want to rush into anything and have to.
Sure.
We'll look back.
I think it needs looks at and.
Charlie, ordinance committee, look into it, and that's going to be a tough one.
Yeah, schedule that January 1st.
Charlie, Larry, and Ron.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? Advice?
Take your time, it's a new deal.
Yeah, don't rush.
Okay.
Bring back what you think we should do, and then the whole council will vote on it.
Okay.
To keep it or rescind it, I guess.
Okay.
Finance committee met August the 30th.
We didn't meet, I actually don't have minutes in here yet. We talked about a lot of things, or not really a lot of things, talked about the, the remaining COVID money, but didn't really make any decisions on it, and talked about village employee potential raises, health insurance increases, all those things, but no decisions were really made. We're kind of waiting on some numbers back from Cheryl, and then we'll schedule another meeting to revisit all those things.
Okay.
Some budget numbers from the last couple of years, so we kind of look over for department heads, get ready to do new budgets coming up for next year.
I forget, is there a time limit on that COVID money? Do we have to?
December 31st.
December?
Okay, any questions for finance committee?
Have a much more thorough minutes report after the next meeting.
The numbers that you asked for, you have tonight.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Okay, administrators' report.
The overpasses, everyone has seen, is finally open.
For good?
That was a long 30 days.
It was a very long 30 days. They have not changed the sign yet. It was at 12:06, it is now 13:08 for the, for the clearance. I did speak with Eric Fanning. I think Mike had a question about maybe putting some type of LED flashers to notify people of the stop sign. Eric is saying that it does not meet their criteria, but they would look into an advanced stop-ahead sign. I'm not really sure what the advanced stop-ahead sign is. And for the criteria, he just kind of gave me a couple things here. One, it's not on a high-speed intersection, and that there would actually have to be at least, he would have to experience at least nine crashes that were caused by somebody running a stop sign, a minimum of nine, before they would.
You can do that.
And in the last three years to even be considered. even be considered. That's part of their criteria.
Close for the last year and a half, so.
It's going to be hard to be stated.
West High Chicago Avenue, Home Brink did raise all the, all but two catch basins. Actually, they came out pretty nice. They finished up their paving and everything, so today they packed up and are out of there. There are still a couple manhole lids that he's looking into raising, but they've got everything seated and strong, got all the driveways taken care of that they had broken during construction. That and the village departments have been busy getting everything around for the auction this Saturday, for the village property auction. There's a few dips and depressions that were obviously on High Street. The one like in front of Paul Yoder's house, it's still somewhat there. I don't, I don't think it's going to get any better with the paving that Home Brink hired have done, so we'll see what it looks like.
Did they just fill that with asphalt, or did they?
They opened it up.
Okay.
I know Nick wasn't the biggest fan of this company that came in, that's for sure.
He hired him.
Yep, yes, he did. And last but not least, we got called out around 1:30 yesterday morning, on Labor Day morning, for a water main break at Cornelian Rock Street, and I just want to give a thanks to the sewer department and the water department, and Kent came out for it as well. Had about, about 12 to 13 hours in that repair. It's a thankless job, you know, you get people coming out and voicing their displeasure with water being shut off, but we moved as fast as we could, but.
Did you get as many phone calls about all that rock around the hole and high as I did?
I did not receive, from the dump trucks?
Mm-hmm.
No.
I got a lot of them.
I did not receive any phone calls, but as soon as the guys got in today, I sent one of the guys in the street department out with the street sweeper, and he made multiple passes to get it cleaned up.
What about, we had discussed doing something down there at the intersection of Catholic Church, where we're going to get prices and stuff.
Yeah.
Everything is, they're all gone, and it's still wrecked.
I had Steve Loop in, which he still needs to give me pricing on the repairs around town.
Nick wouldn't do anything while he had guys here?
Steve Loop said they're the ones that had done it, that they put that patch in. We're figuring it was maybe five years ago, and he is, from our last conversation, he was going to warranty that.
Oh, yeah?
So.
Hmm.
Okay.
I didn't know he'd get that fixed.
So as High Street sits, that's how it's going to, that's High Street until 2025, when the state's coming into?
Not next spring.
Next spring.
Well, it got moved to 2025.
No, it's 2022.
22 is High Street?
The whole town except downtown.
Aren't they coming to the edge of town at 2022, and then doing all through town 2025?
No. They're not doing, call from the Catholic Church to.
State line.
Gas station, they're not doing, Marathon, that's not getting done, and they're not doing from U Sargan to High Street. The rest they are doing. 2025, I don't know anything about that, I've not heard anything like that.
It's been put off for, what, two years now, at least?
Four or five.
So subject to change.
But this is next year to do it all.
Next spring?
Yeah, well, might not be spring, 2022.
We'll call it spring.
It gets dependent, that's the plan.
Okay, any other questions for Cory? Nice article in the paper tonight.
Yeah. Just wanted to rattle Steve's chain, because, you know, this is September, and they're going to give a seal code, and we're not going to have paving time. Rattle his chain a little bit, maybe?
I spoke to him earlier today.
Get something done with that before, we got this year. Thank you.
Okay, the projects and funding updates, I guess, any comments on that? Everybody got that in their packet, right?
Thank you. Very detailed.
Yeah, not very good.
It's just, yeah, it gives an idea. But I know there's a lot of money out there, right, to do a lot of projects that we're going to do, the water well, field, and the water tower, so if we get lucky, could be good. Okay, any other comments on that?
Not this, Mayor, but did you ever check what Bill Welly said about grant money from the state for recycling?
Oh.
I've never heard of it. I've never heard anything either, but he says Defiance County gets it, that's why I wondered.
That'd be a commissioner question, right?
Well, I don't know, does that count?
Maybe that's why they come here, they get a rebate, but I'll check.
I know the county has to meet a certain level percentage every year to keep whoever oversees that stuff happy. As I go out to some people recycling, that percentage, what percentage of waste stream is supposed to get recycled, whoever out there happy. I've never heard of getting money.
So who would I check with?
I would talk to Warren, county engineer.
Warren, okay. All right, I'll do that.
Refugees.
Any other questions for, or Cory? Okay, solicitors' report, you're up.
First thing, second reading, ordinance 2021-12 by caption only, and ordinance amending section 921.01 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding curb and road excavation.
Any questions on that one? We'll vote on it next meeting.
Next is first reading, ordinance 2021-13 by caption only, and ordinance amending section 921.03 of the codified ordinances of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to increase the minimum sewer charge.
Any questions on that one?
I was just going to pipe up one more time. Those numbers are incorrect.
That's the sewer increases, you're talking about the ordinance, the other part of that, page two of that, was the total number for non-annexed.
Inside and outside.
Right, these numbers are wrong.
Those are incorrect.
The 3% increase parts.
Correct.
So that'll be corrected on the second reading, then?
Yeah, I talked to Dawn, her and I were kind of agreeing on numbers, but I said if anybody wants to know, get with Dawn, so that you get back to your numbers on the.
She gave me the numbers.
The flat reading, for inside and outside.
Well, let's not do nothing until we get the right numbers.
No, yes, we've got three readings.
So the next meeting, they're corrected?
And next is first reading, ordinance 2021-14 by caption only, and ordinance authorizing the sale of lots 57 to 105, 110, and 112 to 115, a curb subdivision extension number one, the village of Hicksville, Stephen D. Graber and Deborah R. Graber, and declaring emergency. I'm going to suspend the rule.
Second.
Rule call.
Mike, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
The easement out there that we added on to, did that get cleared up, or I know there was some question on?
Here's what, I, the paperwork got dropped off from my office late last week, and I actually was talking to Kent today, and I looked at it, and I tried to call Bruce, but we played phone tag before I got here today. For some reason, I, when I was in quarantine there right before the auction, I had a conversation with him, explaining it all and everything. He sent me what was going to be the proposed contract to look over and how he worded it in there, which I okayed, and I sent to Cheryl, emailed, and said, hey, I've looked at this already. And then when I'm looking at it and Kent brings it to my attention, I look, and he crossed out the one thing and put seven and a half instead of 15 for it. So I don't know why he did that, that's, that's not correct. I happened to be looking at it, and Mr. and Mrs. Graber's attorney was in my office, and we had been talking about it anyways, about how he represents him, and I told him, hey, we got to get this, and he assured me it wasn't going to be an issue, but I said we're going to get it straightened out before that contract signed. So it should be, and I went back and looked at all my notes, or the way I had it, even when we talked about it, you know, several times, is the 15 foot was from the back line of those lots, so it included what's already part of the utility right away, seven and a half feet, plus an additional seven and a half feet, but it's 15 total from the back lot of the, the back line of these lots, and then there's the other seven and a half feet on the back of those other lots where we've.
Existing.
The existing, right. So total, it would be 22 and a half feet, but the actual easement to go on these properties and what the blurb I, Kent had me send to Tom Henry, and what he drew up in the language he used, was 15 feet off of the back line of these properties that's being sold. So it's not 15 additional, it's 15 total, be an additional seven and a half.
Correct.
So I, like I said, I got, I didn't get with Bruce today, but I will tomorrow, and make sure we have that in there, so if this gets approved and authorized before the mayor signs it, I want to make sure that it's got the right.
Do we have an idea when we can do closing, if we pass tonight?
It'll take a little while, because they've got to do title insurance and all that stuff, so I have to ship it off, and it'll probably be 30 days or so, I would think.
Good. Okay, so your rule call, next?
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
So second, third readings, ordinance 2021-14 by caption only, and ordinance authorizing the sale of lots 57 to 105, 110, and 112 to 115, of Clearview subdivision extension number one to the village of Hicksville, to Stephen D. Graber and Deborah R. Graber, and declaring an emergency.
Did you say lot 110?
57 to 105, 110, and 112 to 115.
Don't move.
I don't see the 110.
Second.
Before you vote.
It's on here.
Oh, okay, there, my, sorry.
Not on there.
Rule call.
Oh, I see.
Second.
I'm going to get it.
Okay, sorry.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
And then, second reading, a resolution 2021-18 by caption only, and a resolution entered into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2022.
Okay, any other questions for Troy?
Are we still taking the last? Maine and Arthur?
Yeah, thanks for reminding me that, I have that in, to get ready, because we want to do an auction on that as well. So what I'll do at the next meeting, I was grabbing like the legal description stuff, is I'll bring something to, kind of similar to what we did with this, to authorize the sale at public auction to start with, and then we'll have to get with somebody and get all that ready, and it'll be the same process as I have auction, once it's sold, then we come back, and as long as everybody approves it or whatever, we'll approve the contract afterwards, I'll have that for the next.
Couldn't do sealed bids, got to be an actual auction?
I mean, it's got to be advertised and all that, I mean, you probably could do it, you probably could do it by sealed bid, but.
Okay, what are we thinking best?
It's probably, just depends, I mean, usually municipalities do things by a public auction, just because that's the standard that they use, and the best bid on a given day, and so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, police chief, Doc, are you, update us a little bit, what's going on?
The only thing I had was, last month, was it August, we had 424 calls for service per month, and 250, one of those were, ended up being cases.
Any questions for Doc? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Doc.
Fire EMS.
Our numbers for August, we had 14 fire runs and 69 EMS runs. The total for the year so far is total fire is 109, and total EMS is 407. Last year, our total EMS for the entire year was 521, so there's definitely an increase in runs, whether it's COVID, actual calls, or abuse of the system, I can't, I don't break down to that, but that's the numbers.
Scott? Here lately, I've heard a couple different times where the equipment goes out and no longer, more than it gets there, and they send it back. Do the people that called it in still have to pay for that?
I'd have to check on that, depends on the call. If they sign off, there's usually, I think it's like $110 call, $110 charge, but I'm not sure.
I know we've had, on my thing that I can listen to you guys, that we've had, we've had two or three here just recently. That's a lot of iron rolling down the road for free.
Yeah, I know. I would like another PFP meeting next Wednesday, if possible.
Can you make it 4:30?
Should be able to, if I can make it.
Mike? This can you drag?
Yes.
Do I need to post that, Cheryl?
Yep. That's all I have for right now. Do you have any questions?
So your meeting went well tonight, or not what we're going to discuss?
It's what we're going to discuss.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Kramer? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Guy.
Park director, I don't see anybody here from the park, are you here for the park? No, I don't know who you are, so I'll just pick on you a little bit.
Mr. Will.
Who?
Isaac.
Isaac Will. Okay. Cory?
He works your job, actually.
Yeah, because he said you ain't doing it right.
I can switch ties right now. Okay, park buddy, on the park.
Well, park board, man.
Okay. Cheryl, you're up.
I have your fund status, and I think, hope I did the annual one, I did. Cast summary by fund, it's for all through August 31st. The August utility and tax collection reports, July and August revolving loan reports, and you notice we had another loan paid off, July and August mayor's court report, and the quarterly report for the police department, and you have a list of all the permits in Hicksville from liquor control.
Okay, any questions for fiscal officer?
Are you going to make your meeting next?
I'll be here anyway, so, yes.
You're invited.
Do you set up another finance?
Listen, as you look at those numbers, if you have any questions, call me, and we're ready.
Okay, any other questions? I have nothing on mayor's report, except you got this letter from the back insurance agency. Any questions on that options for consideration you might want to look at over and see if you want?
It's the bottom paragraph, the only thing that I would, I would like to see on the cyber data breach is, our deductible right now is $25,000, and for 381 a year, that can drop to 10,000. That would be prudent.
So, who can make that changes? Do we have to vote on that?
Vote on it and then ask Conrad.
When do you have to have this in for him?
Whenever.
That's a good, good gesture, Cheryl.
Do we want to do it now?
If you vote on it, then I can call Conrad and have him add it.
I sent something over, probably.
I make the motion that we authorize Cheryl to lower our deductible, as stated by her, for the 387 dollars a year.
Do we have that money, Cheryl?
You do.
We'll find them.
I'll second that.
She'll find the money. Okay, we've got a first and a second. Rule call.
Barth?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Okay, anything else needs, come before the council.
Mayor, I would like to say, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, just to clarify, I looked up the email from Rod Mass, it was about five years from now for those remaining sections. That's where the 2025 came from, for the remainder.
For the downtown area?
Yeah, for the downtown area.
Several months back, wanting to know what other sections we need paved, like coming up. Now, I didn't push it back to 2025, I think I have it 2023, which I knew they wouldn't do, so.
Yeah, that's where the 2025 came from, if anybody was wondering. That's all that I have.
I just wanted to mention, I came from Defiant Way and coming in 18, and I noticed the sign and low barrier on the school road, very nice, very nice. It kind of, it catches you, and it's very appealing, and really looks sharp out there.
We're going to add some lights to the front of it, floodlights.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Still waiting on that, but.
Yeah, we'll make it light it up so them truckers can wheel in there and see what they hit.
Nice having Hicksville grad do that, Caleb Savage.
He did a nice job.
He did.
Okay, anything else that needs to be brought before this council?
I just wanted to let you guys know that the old 93 dump truck, the big Kodiak, we had two of those great big Kodiak dump trucks, the gov deals closed today on that one, and it sold for 10,3, so. We listed, I think it was really well.
It's a pretty good number.
We had a reserve of 6,000 on it, so.
Okay.
Bill, did you have?
Bill, do you have one?
I've just got one, things for water, sewer, the land. Do you want to talk about that, or are you guys going to decide without going into any detail?
Right.
I didn't, I kind of need to let.
They need more details.
No, not, I mean, I don't want to divulge anything in public. You want me to call a, a.
Moderator meeting?
Or executive.
Let's just do executive session. I have a motion that we move to executive session for.
And I'll second it.
Land discussion.
Possible land purchase.
Possible land purchase.
There we go. Good motion, and a second.
Is Mr. Al home for, for a reason? Do you have something to, you just come to hang out? Wow, that's cool.
Welcome.
All right, thanks.
Well, we were telling him that Bob runs the show, so he came to see.
Bob, nobody would believe that. Hey, roll call.
Don't anybody ask Tori any questions, we're getting at my time. Come on.
Barth.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Klepper.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
And folks, as soon as we hear anything, you will be brought up to speed.